We will now call the December 20, 2021 meeting to order. At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence for Mr. Dick Voss, who died several days ago at the age of 98, a longtime electrical inspector for the city of Belleville, so if we could have a moment of silence in his memory. Okay, thank you very much. Since the meetings are being videotaped, it is important that everyone speak directly into the microphone when speaking. And I'd like to remind you, the explanation of the disaster plan, we would go exit directly out of this area right here up the ramp if we would happen to have a disaster. So, at this time, I'd like to have Jenny call the roll call of Alderman.
Alderman Hazel?
Here.
Alderman Whitaker?
Here.
Alderwoman Duco?
Here.
Alderman, Alderwoman Eris?
Here.
Alderman Randall?
Here.
Alderman Ferguson?
Here.
Alderman Anthony?
Here.
Alderman Ovian?
Here.
Alderman Dillman?
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Wygon?
Here.
Alderman Wiggington?
Here.
Alderwoman Sullivan?
Here.
All present, mayor.
Thank you. Now, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Bierman?
Here.
City Attorney Horner?
Present.
Police Chief Bill Clay?
Here.
Fire Chief JP Penay? Finance Director Jamie Maitrait?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole?
Yes.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith? Director of Libraries Neander Spearman?
Here.
Director of IT Scott Markovich?
Here.
City Engineer Sal Elcott?
Here.
Director of Health Housing and Buildings Scott Tyler?
Here.
Director of Human Resources Seth Miller?
Here.
Director of Economic Development Planning and Zoning Clifford Cross?
Present.
Chief Penay and Randy Smith are excused, and Jay Goddard is here for Randy.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. If we have a little stuff to do today. You know what? Jenny just brought it to my attention that we have a lovely Boy Scout group here. Would you like to come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And could you loudly introduce yourselves? Your name and where you're from, your troop number?
What's your name?
What's your name?
My name is Warnick Beatty.
Warnick Beatty?
And your name? Kinley.
Kinley? Great. And what doctrine are you with?
Alderman.
Well, we thank you for being here tonight. And thank you for your service to your community. Let's turn around and say the pledge. Okay, gentlemen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's have a big round of applause. Thank you. Now, who would sit down?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Cathedral?
Cathedral.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, that is wonderful.
They'll have to come back when they get the merit badge, and we'll introduce them to the people in the community who are here at the city council meeting. Thank you so much. Okay, no public hearing this evening, and we have public participation, two to three minutes per person. Raise your hand if you would like to speak to the public participation this evening. Okay, hearing none, we will move on. I would like, tonight, we do not have presentation, recognitions, or appointments, so we will move on to the approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve city council meeting minutes from December 6, 2021.
So moved, Wiggington.
Schaefer, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Now, claims, payroll, and disbursements. This is a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of $819,471.55 and payroll in the amount of $825,251.85. Steele, so moved.
Eris, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
I'm sorry, that's money. I apologize.
Okay, we're going to roll call.
Sorry. Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, now, motion from Finance, Alderman Whitaker?
I would like to do 11 V 2 separate. Is there any objection to doing the other two together?
No, go ahead.
11 V 1, motion to approve budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director. And 11 V 3, motion to waive formal bidding processes and approve one-time fees of $51,660 with Control Co., $9,780 with Bear Heating and Cooling, and purchase of a desktop computer from Micro Center for $817.99 for a total project cost of $62,257.99 to commission the HVAC controller software and upgrade controller hardware for the buildings located at 2600 West Main Street. So moved.
Eris, second.
Discussion?
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay.
For 11 V 2, I'll defer to another member of the Finance Committee.
Yes.
11 V 2 is a motion to approve the 2021 tax levy. Motion to approve as submitted.
Okay. Any second? Schaefer? Any discussion? Yes.
This was an issue that had a lot of topic, a lot of conversation at Finance. One issue I reviewed thoroughly and have some concerns on the approval of this motion as it's presented. Just 64 days ago, we sat in the same council chambers and approved an audit that was submitted to us, and I'm just going to provide a highlight of that audit. It says, "The following are few financial highlights presented in the accompanying statements for the city of Belleville for the fiscal year ended April 30, 2021. The city's total net position for government and business-type activities increased by $21,893,886 during fiscal year 2021. Net position of the city's pension trust funds increased by $21,158,022. The fund balance of the city's government funds increased by $6,455,193 during the current fiscal year, including an increase of $2,717,305 in the general fund. Additionally, so as we talked about this 64 days ago, we commended our finance staff for the great work they did and those amazing numbers, some of the best investments and positive increases in our funds that we've had in several years. And here we are 64 days later, wanting to pass a property tax increase to the residents of our city. As I look at the projected budget that we have for this year, it's a total budget of And yet, the tax levy that's sitting in front of us today would only increase the amount of money into the city by $48,000. Therefore, based on that, for us to do our fiscal responsibility as city officials, I cannot support a property tax increase. If we can't find $48,000 in the $28 million budget, I don't know that we're all doing our best as elected city officials. Therefore, I would encourage a no vote on this tonight."
Okay. Any discussion?
Thank you, Alderman Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Elmore.
Jamie had pointed out, and I hear Alderman Whitaker a lot, and those are some excellent points. Jamie had pointed out that this is three of, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, $3 or $4 for a $100,000 house?
Correct.
A year?
Correct.
Last time I had this discussion, we didn't raise the tax levy at all. We went through a very trying year, and we all know that we have to, as we just had previous conversations, the previous meeting, we all have to figure out ways to buy trash trucks. We're always looking at fire trucks and police trucks and just on and on daily expenses. And I know that Jamie and Alderman Whitaker commensurate as well, that Jamie crunches those numbers like it's nobody's business. And I'm glad that it's so minimal. And the fact that it's minimal is, I think, part of Alderman Whitaker's point, which is very well spoken. But I'm glad that it's minimal, and I don't want to, I personally don't want to sit here and second-guess Jamie. Jamie knows this stuff inside and out, and if she says it's a minimal amount this year, well, good. That's good, because we're doing good. $3 a year, that's the cost of doing business, so be it.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Alderman Elmore, then, are you saying that it's a good thing or a bad thing? I don't know if you got to that point.
It's a good thing that we're only asking $3 a year more for $100,000 of property tax. I'm glad it's not more.
Right.
It was nothing the last time we did this. And, you know, so I don't know that if we're looking at raising fees to do more trash services or fire truck equipment purchases, or all the things that it just takes to make the city run, I don't know that $3 a year for $100,000 of property is asking too much. But I think the point is that we're asking for anything. Correct. I mean, I applaud that. Yeah, we're at a point where 64 days ago, we're filing reports with record numbers of increases. For the first time in quite a while, we've been able to lower our tax levy contributions to police and fire because of the amount of money that they made last year while still making sure we're fully funding those. But I have a hard time applauding those efforts and then 64 days later, going to our residents. The residents aren't hearing $3 on $100,000. They're hearing, "You're raising my property taxes," at a time where inflation is at its highest, where the economy is struggling to recover. They're hearing all those things. They're not hearing a $3 amount. They're hearing, "You're raising my property taxes." As fiscal agents of this city elected to do this, I feel it's in our best interest to find that $48,000 in a $28 million budget.
Ms. Schaefer?
And here's what I think's going to happen. We're going to raise a fee on something else. And so, it could be trash. It could be, but it's still going to raise something.
Possibly, but again, unless we...
So, in good conscience, are you going to be okay with raising a fee on everyone who's going to be doing something?
Without evaluating what that increase would be, I couldn't say, I couldn't state that.
Yes. Mr. Wiggington?
I'm sorry, I was just going to invite Jamie up sometime for a little more explanation.
Yes.
You can do that whenever you want.
Yes.
And Alderman Schaefer, maybe yes, maybe no on a fee. We don't know. When you're looking at a budget this big, and we only have to have $48,000, I want to see the Belleville News Democrat headline say, "City Council overturns proposed tax levy." Because for the, and I agree with what they're saying, inflation's up 30%, and, you know, the cost of living's going up. And it's, I don't think in this case, it's the dollars, whether it's $48,000 or $480,000. I think at this time, it would be prudent for us to make a statement that even though it's a small amount, we're not going to raise taxes.
Any more discussion? Jamie, could you address this and your thought process, please?
Yes. So, yes, tonight, in front of you is a proposed increase to the tax levy of .42%, which does equate to about $48,000 on 11.4 million tax levy. Through my analysis, this is the recommended proposal to fund the sources for the tax levy that go into our various funds. And we do not levy, let me make clear, we do not levy for our general fund that supports our day-to-day operations. We probably, it's probably about 80% that goes to our police pension, fire pension, and our IMRF pensions. So that is the vast majority of where this goes. Now, I will also remind you that last year at this time, we actually had a decrease of three, above 3% on the tax levy. So this tax levy proposed tonight is not even where it was two years ago. It's lower. So, at that time, though, I had mentioned, we had significantly decreased the library and the recreation budget, or the tax levy, excuse me, because of COVID. Those programs were generally shut down, so we knew we were giving the taxpayers at least at one time, significant decrease to the taxes to help with their burden. But I also said at the time that they would have to get back up to their operating levels when those functions were fully operational again, which they are. So, this is the levy that I'm recommending. Obviously, it is your levy to approve. You have to answer to the constituents a lot more than I do. Also, keep in mind, though, I want to remind all of you that I am also a resident of Belleville. I still have a residency requirement, but even if I didn't, I live in this town, so I have extreme personal incentive to keep these taxes as low as they can be as well, because I don't want to pay them. But I weigh that against making sure we meet all of our obligations here at the city.
Jamie, do we know about how much we will lose with the 6% population decrease from...
Right. So, it was just over 2,000 person lost, based on the census, certified census data that's starting to kick into effect this month, actually. Across all of our funds for income tax, use tax, motor fuel, it should be approximately $600,000 that we'll lose on a yearly basis.
Okay. I appreciate your information, and thank you for your hard work. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
No.
Ferguson?
No.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
No.
Rothweiler?
No.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
No.
Whitaker?
No.
Duco?
No.
Nine no's, seven ayes.
Okay, so it does not pass. Okay.
Well, you need to have a tax levy, because you have to file it. So, I would suggest that there, it's going to have to be a motion to amend it.
Make it a sentence or something.
A motion to approve it as amended, because you have to file your tax levy by next Tuesday.
Right.
I would make a motion to carry a tax levy at identical amounts to the prior year, allowing the Finance Director to allocate those funds to the appropriate level items as needed.
Okay.
Is that possible?
No, you guys will need to tell me which lines you want to decrease, because if I keep them the same as they were last year, we will fund more in pensions than we need to and lessen other lines. So, again, amend it. Tell me which line specifically you want to decrease. Which obligations will we not meet?
And you have them on your work sheet.
Uh, next Tuesday.
Okay. I don't know if we need to call a special meeting with that.
Not between now and Christmas.
Because Jamie will have to file the tax levy, and with Christmas coming up this weekend, I don't know if the Finance Committee should meet again.
I have a question.
Yes, Chris.
Is there reserves, Jamie, if you use pay for $40,000 in those lines, or we have to specific this to...
Reserves in which line? If you guys are wanting, if you guys are wanting to transfer money from the general fund to meet an obligation, that is up to you. You guys have to tell me what you want to do.
Again, if reserves within the general fund, that's correct.
If you, yeah, if you want that.
Based on the review of the levy that was proposed, both library and playgrounds were increased to an area, not only to where they were prior to the COVID reduction, but also $10,000 ahead in both of those funds. So if we want to consider something of reducing each of those funds by $10,000 and then take the other $28,000 out of the TORT liability, which is our largest increase this year, then we could get into a situation where we did ask today, where we had to pass an amendment to add additional money to TORT levy out of the general fund.
So, no, that wasn't out of the general fund. As I discussed in Finance, we took, we had to use 300,000 of reserves in the TORT liability fund, which is about half of those reserves, because we're going to hit, we've already hit our budget for the year, and we're seven months, eight months through the year. So, the claims keep racking up. If you guys want to pay the work comp and the liability claims that you guys always approve, we're already at $300,000 over budget. So, again, if you don't want to increase that next year, you're going to be dipping through more reserves or have to fund it out of the general fund, because those claims have to be paid. You tell me.
Okay.
I think you're going to have to have a special meeting before Monday.
I feel we do, too.
I don't know if you're in a position right now to amend it, if you haven't discussed how it will be amended.
Okay.
But the levy, the tax levy has to be filed by Tuesday.
Yep.
So you would have to have a tax levy approved at a special meeting on Monday in order to file it during fiscal hours Tuesday.
Okay, so it looks like we're having a special meeting on Monday.
I'll change my vote to a yes.
Okay, so, what, 7 o'clock usually, or...
I will figure that out, but I just want everybody to know with the holidays that...
I'm not available Monday night either, so...
Both.
FYI.
Yep, I'm out of town.
So, I would suggest you have a Finance Committee meeting this week then, and have the council meeting. Well, you could, maybe you could...
We could have the Finance maybe at 6 o'clock. Well, and it would have to be on Tuesday or Wednesday.
No.
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 We have to have 48 hours, and then Wednesday, we're off a half a day.
Thursday, we close at noon.
Noon.
So we'd either have to have a morning, which I know most people here work.
We're going to have to do it Wednesday evening?
Conceivably. We could still have a meeting on Thursday.
Mayor, you talking about a meeting for Finance only or Finance and Council both? I mean, I'm getting confused here on who's going to meet.
It would have to be approved by Council.
It has to be approved by Council. I mean, we need to have both meetings.
Our last meeting of the year.
No, it won't be.
It can't be.
We have to have both at some point.
We can't finish business.
Before Tuesday.
Business finished. I think we're going to have to...
Maybe you ought to go around your room, ask how many people are going to be out of town on Monday, because it sound like a lot of people are not going to be here.
Are we able to take a revote?
I had three.
Can we take it by Zoom? Can we do the meeting by Zoom? Or the council meeting on the vote after the Finance Committee gives their recommendations? That way, people that are going to be out of town, I know Mr. Wiggington's leaving to go to Texas. Dennis, do you have a suggestion?
Why can't we just do it Wednesday?
I have to have 48 hours to post. Today's done. So I have to post, and all agendas have to be posted 48 hours in advance. That doesn't give us enough time.
So we would almost have to...
May I make a comment, actually?
Yes.
So, this proposed levy has been out since November 29. I didn't receive one phone call asking me to look at anything, make cuts, figure it out. Here we are at the 11th hour. You guys, we can't even find a meeting date because of the holidays and the deadlines, yet nobody said, and even last Monday night, there was comments made to make cuts, but nobody had a specific suggestion. Otherwise, we would have made those cuts and brought it to you that way.
Alderman Steele has a question on the floor. We can get an answer from the attorney and find out whether or not we can rectify the situation.
Are we able to vote on this again? Is that protocol?
There'd have to be a motion to reconsider.
And if the reserves are being the general fund, is that correct?
If you, yeah, I really want that.
Based on the, the review of the levy that was proposed, both library and playgrounds were increased to an area, not only to where they were prior to the COVID reduction, but also ten thousand dollars ahead in both of those funds. So if we want to consider something of reducing each of those funds by ten thousand dollars and then take the other twenty-eight thousand out of the tort liability, which is our largest increase this year, then we could get into a situation where we did ask today, where we had to pass a, an amendment to, to add additional money to tort levy out of the general fund.
So, no, that wasn't out of the general fund. As I discussed in finance, we took, we had to use three-hundred thousand of reserves in the tort liability fund, which is about half of those reserves because we're going to hit, we've already hit our budget for the year and we're seven months, eight months through the year. So the claims keep racking up. If you guys want to pay the work comp and the liability claims that you guys always approve, we're already at three-hundred thousand dollars over budget. So again, if you don't want to increase that next year, you're going to be dipping through more of reserves or have to fund it out of the general fund because those claims have to be paid. You tell me.
Okay.
I think you're going to have to have a special meeting before Monday.
I feel we do, too.
I don't know if you're in a position right now to amend it, if, if you haven't discussed how it will be amended.
Okay.
But, but the levy, the tax levy has to be filed by Tuesday.
Yep.
So you would have to have a, a tax levy approved at a special meeting on Monday in order to, to file it during the fiscal hours Tuesday.
Okay, so it looks like we're having a special meeting on Monday.
I'll change my vote to a yes.
Okay, so what, seven o'clock usually, or?
Um, I, I, I will figure that out, but I just want everybody to know with the holidays that-
I'm not available Monday night either, so FYI.
Yep, I'm out of town.
So I would, I would suggest you have a finance committee meeting this week then and have, have a council meeting. Well, you could, maybe you could-
We could have the finance maybe at six o'clock. Well, and it would have to be on Tuesday or Wednesday.
No.
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 We have to have forty-eight hours and then Wednesday we're off a half a day.
Thursday, we close, Thursday we close at noon.
Noon.
So we'd either have to have a morning, which I know every, most people here work.
We're going to have to do it Wednesday evening?
Conceivably, but could still have a meeting on Thursday.
Mary, you talking about a meeting for finance only or finance and council both? I mean, I'm getting confused here on who's going to meet.
It would have to be approved by council.
It has to be approved by council.
I mean, we need to have both meetings.
Huh?
Our last meeting of the year.
No, it won't be. It can't be.
We have to have both at some point.
We can't finish business.
Before Tuesday.
It's got to have the business finished.
I think we're going to have to-
Maybe you ought to go around your room, ask how many people are going to be out of town on Monday because it sound like a lot of people are not going to be here.
Are we able to take a revote?
I had three.
Can we take it by Zoom? Can we do the meeting by Zoom? Or the council meeting on the vote after the finance committee gives their recommendations? That way, people that are going to be out of town, I know Mr. Wiggington's leaving to go to Texas.
Mm-hmm.
Dennis, do you have a suggestion?
Why can't we just do it Wednesday?
I, I, I have to have forty-eight hours to post. Today's done. So I have to post and all agendas have to be posted forty-eight hours in advance. That doesn't give us enough time.
So we would almost have to-
May I make a comment, actually?
Yes.
So this proposed levy has been out since November twenty-ninth. I didn't receive one phone call asking me to look at anything, make cuts, figure it out. Here we are at the eleventh hour. You guys, we can't even find a meeting date because of the holidays and the deadlines, yet nobody said, and even last Monday night, there was comments made to make cuts, but nobody had a specific suggestion. Otherwise, we would have made those cuts and brought it to you that way.
Alderman Steele has a question on the floor. We can get an, an answer from the attorney and find out whether or not we can rectify the situation.
Are we able to, to vote on this again? Does that protocol?
There'd have to be a motion to reconsider and it has, the, the motion has, and the second would have to come from somebody who voted in the majority. I'd make a motion to reconsider.
Second.
I'm sorry, who just said the second?
Okay, hold on. Any discussion? We will now revote.
This will be a vote to reconsider.
Oh, vote on the motion.
And that address.
Okay. Is the motion approved to reconsider? Roll call.
Okay. Randall?
Aye.
And this is just the vote on the motion to reconsider, right?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shafer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor fifteen-one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, motion from ordinance and legal review, Alderman Wiggington?
And if the council doesn't mind, these are pretty academic. I'd like to read them both at the same time. On behalf of ordinance and legal, I'd like to make a motion to amend Title IX General Regulations, Chapter ninety-one Cemeteries, Section ninety-one point three-two Cemetery Fees Regarding Niche Internment. Eleven C two, motion to amend Title IX General Regulations, Chapter ninety-two Health and Sanitation, Section ninety-two point two-two Residential Refuge Collection Fee to Add Commercial Refuge Collection Fees. So moved.
Eric, second. Any discussion? Hearing none? A roll call?
Nope, just you can do all in favor.
Oh, no, ayes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, motions from master sewer committee, Alderman Dittelman.
I, too, would like to, if I can, reall three of these motions together and put them together and vote on them. Please head.
Please.
Okay. On behalf of the master sewer committee, then, on eleven D motions from us, motion to waive formal bidding procedure to purchase one new Caterpillar GP five-zero C N one, ten-thousand-pound gas LP dual-fuel pneumatic tire lift truck in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. In a matter of eleven D two, motion to enter into an agreement with TWM for construction services for Phase Five LT CP not to exceed three-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars. Eleven D three, motion authorizing sale conversion of waste department vehicle that's a Ford Ranger two thousand and seven, the then, last five numbers, two-two-zero-nine-one.
Eric, second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shafer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
That motion carries.
So how you need another?
We need a motion to approve and a second to vote on the tax levy.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax levy.
Second, Elmore.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shafer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
No.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor fifteen-one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, motion from ordinance and legal review, Alderman Wiggington?
And if the council doesn't mind, these are pretty academic. I'd like to read them both at the same time. On behalf of ordinance and legal, I'd like to make a motion to amend Title IX General Regulations, Chapter ninety-one Cemeteries, Section ninety-one point three-two Cemetery Fees Regarding Niche Internment. Eleven C two, motion to amend Title IX General Regulations, Chapter ninety-two Health and Sanitation, Section ninety-two point two-two Residential Refuge Collection Fee to Add Commercial Refuge Collection Fees. So moved.
Eric, second. Any discussion? Hearing none? A roll call?
Oh, no, ayes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, motions from master sewer committee, Alderman Dittelman.
I, too, would like to, if I can, reall three of these motions together and put them together and vote on them. Please head.
Please.
Okay. On behalf of the master sewer committee, then, on eleven D motions from us, motion to waive formal bidding procedure to purchase one new Caterpillar GP five-zero C N one, ten-thousand-pound gas LP dual-fuel pneumatic tire lift truck in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. In a matter of eleven D two, motion to enter into an agreement with TWM for construction services for Phase Five LT CP not to exceed three-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars. Eleven D three, motion authorizing sale conversion of waste department vehicle that's a Ford Ranger two thousand and seven, the then, last five numbers, two-two-zero-nine-one.
Eric, second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shafer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. A motion from planning commission, Alderman Dittelman.
Eleven E, motion for planning commission to decide on Eddie's frozen custard, eleven E one, and Steak Burger Development. Site plan approval for the construction of an approximate three-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-eight square-foot restaurant building with associated drive-through and outdoor dining on an approximate forty-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-one square-foot lot within a C two heavy commercial district, parcel zero-eight dash one-nine dot zero dash one-oh-two dash zero-zero-nine, Ward Eight. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval with the following stipulations. The conditions of the director of wastewater be met prior to the city council site plan approval, conditions met. The planning commission accepts the current dimensions of the parking spaces as nine feet wide by eighteen feet in length. Extension of the apron, future consideration of the dead end taken out to the next lot. And awning added to the south side facade of the building with all present members voting in affirmative with a vote of eight to nothing.
A second, please.
Ferguson.
Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shafer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Ordinances. Motion to be read by title only, ordinance ninety-eleven, ninety-fifteen, ninety-sixteen, ninety-seventeen, ninety-eighteen, ninety-nineteen, and ninety-twenty. Do I have a motion?
Eric, second.
And then a second? Anthony? Discussion? Yes.
Can ninety-seventeen be considered separate?
We have a-
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So, any discussion? Oh, we got to read them first. Sorry, guys, I really have a trouble tonight. I better go home and go back to bed and then come back in. Sorry. Jenny?
We need, so that was a motion to read them together for ninety-seventeen?
Yes, yes, except nine, yes.
I don't think we voted. There was a motion and a second.
Right.
All in favor? We need.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Jenny, you want to read?
Do you care if I read them together other than ninety-seventeen?
Please.
Yeah, okay. Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-eleven, twenty-twenty-one, a zoning ordinance regards to case sixty-seven, November twenty-one, Eddie L. Chambers. Fifteen B, ordinance ninety-fifteen, twenty-twenty-one, and ordinance approving an amendment to the tax increment redevelopment plan and redevelopment project for the city of Belleville, redevelopment project area number three, and extending the term thereof to December twenty-nine, twenty-thirty-three. Fifteen C, ordinance ninety-sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, and ordinance providing for the annual tax levy upon real estate. Wait, you want it.
That was the one I went for.
That's the one you wanted, yep. I had ninety-seventeen, sorry. Okay. Fifteen-
D.
D, ordinance ninety-seventeen, twenty-twenty-one, and ordinance abating all taxes heretofore levy for the year twenty-twenty-one to pay the principal of an interest on general obligation bond of the city of Belleville, Illinois. Fifteen E, ordinance ninety-eighteen, twenty-twenty-one, and ordinance amending Title IX General Regulations, Chapter ninety-one Cemetery, Section ninety-one point three-two Cemetery Fees of the revised code of ordinances of the city of Belleville as amended. Fifteen F, ordinance ninety-nineteen, twenty-twenty-one, and ordinance amending Title IX General Regulations, Chapter ninety-two Health and Sanitation, Section ninety-two point twenty-two Residential Refuge Collection Fee of the revised ordinances of the city of Belleville as amended. Fifteen G, ordinance ninety-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and ordinance authorized sale and conversion of personal property, two thousand and seven Ford Ranger truck wastewater treatment plant.
So we have a motion to approve, I need a motion to approve ordinances ninety-eleven, ninety-fifteen, ninety-seventeen, ninety-eighteen, ninety-nineteen, and ninety-twenty as read.
Tell them, Wiggington.
Second?
Aye.
Discussion? Roll call.
Shafer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?